Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully execute your faithfully discharged.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of board of education member.
Of board of education member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
You can repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board of education member.
The office of board of education member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution, Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of superintendent of schools.
Of the office of superintendent of schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The nominations are now in order for the president of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year.
I nominate Steve Zabel for the pleasure.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of electing Steve Zabel the president of the Board of Education?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Vote is Steve Zabel is elected president of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board president.
Of the office of board president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Sure. Open for nominations for board vice president?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate John Fercucci as vice president.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Here, I'll close nominations. All those in favor of electing John Fercucci as board vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. Congratulations. It's customary for the vice, new vice president to give a speech. Yeah?
Yeah.
Would the board clerk then swear in, please, the vice president?
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
Constitution, Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board vice president.
The office of board vice president. Isn't that nice?
Yeah, it's awesome. It's a nice thing to do.
I know, I have to swear, you want? Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of district clerk.
Of the office of district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, um, I could call for motion to appoint, uh, the appointment of all the other officers. Purchasing agent, treasurer, tax collector, internal claims auditor, faculty auditor, deputy treasurer, and attendance clerk. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. We're gonna do these in, in groups of four, for each of the, the bolded titles. If there's any, um, thing that you went separated, please do say so before I call the vote. I'd like to call for motion for the appointments for the Board of Education for insurance agent and student accident insurance agent. Number eight, the bonding of positions for tre, uh, treasuries, internal claims auditor and tax collector. Nine, the designation of depositories. And ten, the designation of official newspapers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion for the approval of petty cash funds. Uh, number twelve, the approval of the designation of signatures for checks. Uh, number thirteen, the authorization to sign contracts. And number fourteen, the authorization for bid openings. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. To call for a motion to, uh, for the adopt, number fifteen, the adoption of cooperative bidding resolution. Number sixteen, the approve the best value bidding resolution. Number seventeen, the authorization for signatures on claims and payroll. Number eighteen, the, uh, to approve meeting dates and times listed on the Board of Education calendar. Moving seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to, for number nineteen, the authorization to invest district funds. Number twenty, the authorization to make credit applications. Number twenty-one, the adoption of policies and bylaws. And twenty-two, the appointment of committees on special education and preschool. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. To call for, um, motion for, um, item number twenty-three, the appointment of impartial hearing officer. Item twenty-four, the appointment of a surrogate parent. Item twenty-five, to approve appointment of staff on an interim basis. And twenty-six, to approve the school physicians. Moving seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. Item, uh, call for motion to approve item twenty-seven, to approve the homestead, non-homestead tax rate system for levy and property taxes. Item twenty-eight, the authorization to submit applications and reports for school, uh, fund, federal school lunch and milk programs. Item twenty-nine, the authorization to file for federal grant applications. And item thirty, the appoint the school attorney. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to approve item thirty-one, the appointment of civil service officer. Item thirty-two, the appointment of Title IX compliance officers. Number thirty-three, the appointment of auditors. And number thirty-four, the appointment of internal auditors. It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to, uh, to approve item thirty-five, the appointment of district audit committee. Item thirty-six, the appointment of capital project committee. Item thirty, thirty-seven, the appointment of policy committee. Item thirty-eight, the adoption of the nine thirteen resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion for, to accept item thirty-nine, the appointment of district records management officer. Item forty, the appointment of district records access officer for freedom of infor, freedom of information law. Item forty-one, the appointment of district records access and appeals officer for the freedom of information law. And item forty-two, the appointment of the Orleans Niagara Health Insurance Consortium representative. It's moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. Item forty, call for motion to accept item forty-three, the approve the yearly mailings of reasonable assurances letters. Item forty-four, the authorization for sports playoffs and sectional competitions. Item forty-five, to approve the resolution for, resolution for the authorization of budget transfers. And item forty-six, the authorization for the approval of employee travel and the approval of travel by the superintendent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to accept item forty-seven, to approve mileage reimbursement rate. Item forty-eight, to approve the standard workday and re-reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. Item forty-nine, to approve fiscal consultants. And item fifty, to approve agreement with, uh, SC, uh, get, Dengon Consultants LLC. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to accept item fifty-one, the approval of bond counsel. Item fifty-two, the approve Medicaid compliance officer. Item fifty-three, to approve educational officer or official. Item fifty-four, to approve the dignity act coordinators.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to accept item fifty-five, to approve the athletic code of conduct. Item fifty-six, to approve the attendance officer. Item fifty-seven, to approve the representative and signatory to the Niagara Power Coalition and Host Community Standing Committee. And item fifty-eight, to approve the AHTIRA compliance officer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion to accept item fifty-nine, to approve the school pesticide representative. Item sixty, approve the chemical hygiene officer. Item sixty-one, to approve the district residency officer. And item sixty-two, to approve the homeless liaison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Call for motion for item sixty-three, to approve cellphone use. And item sixty-four, to approve the Indian policies and procedures. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion of adjournment for the reorganization meeting. It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Hey, we are, uh, in adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Now, this portion of the public meeting, I have this, uh, call for saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the meeting go to the superintendent for the presentation of the district-wide safety plan?
Right, um, at, at this point, what I'll say is this, we have an obligation to put this plan up, uh, for, uh, community members to see. Um, it will be approved at a future meeting. Uh, one, one thing that's really important, as we know, is that we have a district-wide safe, safety plan, then we also have building-wide safety plans. The district-wide safety plan is the one that is posted publicly. The, uh, building-wide safety plans are more specific to those buildings, and those are not public, are not for public consumption, public knowledge, because of the specificity in those plans.
Any questions, superintendent, on that? All right then, moving on. A residence comments, did anyone say it? No, okay, but. All right, I'd like to call for a motion to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted. Um, I'd like to just pull item number four to discuss. Actually, that, like, number, it's, it is number four. Yeah. Um, cause there's an addition onto that one that we wanna, you know, that I do also. Any other items to pull or discuss? All those in favor of accepting items one through three and five through eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. Um. Linda Hoffman, again from Springville, is wanting to run it. If you know, we already, we nominated Mary, um, the last meeting. The other thing, one that we, I want to add on here of nominating, cause we can, I had Maureen check with Nisba, we can nominate as many people as possible. Matt Kennedy, who's the president of the North Tonawanda Board of Education, also is interested in being nominated. And I would've said that I would bring that up to the board tonight if we could add them to our nomination list, so that we could amend this, uh, particular line item to say both, uh, Linda R. Hoffman from Springville and, uh, Matt Kennedy of North Tonawanda. Is that okay if we amend that? All right. Board clerk, should we then amend that? All right, so then all those in favor of nominating both Linda and Matt, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining. Motion carries. To call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. I'll second it. Um, I'd like to hold items five and then seven through eleven. Anything else to separate? And fourteen to eighteen. He's got numbers all over his here. All right, all those in favor of accepting items one through four, um, item six, items twelve and thirteen, and items nineteen through thirty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Turn it over to Mr. Stack.
A couple of things about them. It's been very, very busy since the last few weeks of school and end of school, and we've been, uh, working very hard to, to hire some of the best that, uh, are around, and I think, uh, you've accomplished that goal. So, at this time, I'd like to go through and, and recognize some of our, uh, uh, new teachers. Uh, first person that I'd like to, uh, recommend, uh, just rise a little Sierra, well-pleasured Sierra, is coming to us, uh, Niagara Weefield graduate, certainly a second-generation teacher for us. She's gonna be joining Tusker our school, carrying on some of that legacy, and Sierra's, uh, coming to us as a former student teacher. We're really excited to have her aboard, so Sierra, welcome. Congratulations to you. Uh, the next person that I would like to, uh, recognize, Kelly Hare. Kelly? Kelly has a lot of past experience, both out of state and, um, in-state, namely at Royalton Heartland. She's coming to us. And, uh, certainly has a extensive literacy background that's gonna really help us, uh, also with the PD side, professional development side for our teachers here at Niagara Weefield, so we're very excited to have her aboard. Really looking forward to seeing you, grade two of West Street, Kelly. So, congrats. Next up, Anthony Capacili. Anthony? Yeah, I told a couple of people out there that were inquiring neighboring school districts, they couldn't have him. Uh, because he is, uh, really helped us with not only in the classroom this year as a long-term substitute, former student teacher, but he's also, uh, worked boys, boys on the track?
Boys on the right track.
On, on, boys on the right track, as well as our unified basketball program, which has just been fantastic, and he's done an exceptional job with that. Uh, we're very, very proud of that program and proud of Anthony for taking that on. Again, and, or, uh, another graduate, uh, who, uh, we're very excited to bring aboard, so congratulations, Anthony. Kim Lamachia? Kim, um, is coming to us with extensive experience, um, at Royalton Heartland as well. So, uh, her and Kelly know each other very well, and they're certainly gonna add quite a dynamic, uh, tandem to our programming here. Kim, we're very excited to have you as well. Welcome. Kim will be at Colonial Village. Rachel Aquino? Niagara Weefield graduate, a lot of prior experience, and most recently at Reach Charter School. And, uh, she's worked very extensively, um, with at-risk population. We talked about that quite a bit, and she's got a lot of great experiences. We're very proud to have her in. She's got a very charismatic and enthusiastic attitude. And, uh, certainly has an innate ability, I think, to, to communicate, um, not only with colleagues but students as well, so we're, we're very happy to have you here. Christiana Covado? When I think of Christiana, I remember hearing great things from my brother who had her when she was a senior at Wilson. And, uh, Christiana is a person that I think exemplifies very, very hard work. She carried two jobs throughout the entire pandemic, right? So, she worked for us as a building-based sub last year and really helped us out when we realized, not only do we have building-based subs, but we also need some level of substitute coverage for the virtual program. So, she, along with Erin Printo, jumped in pretty heavily, I believe, right, to, to kind of fill that void for us this year, so we're very happy to, uh, have you here, Christiana, uh, and welcome. Kelly Jessenowski. Kelly? Um, again, Kelly, coming with many years of experience, also coming to us from, uh, global contests? I'm sorry, is it, is it Reach as well? Okay. Reach Academy Charter School, um, really good curriculum experience, really good curriculum background, and we're very excited to help her, uh, or have her help coming in to, to deal with some of our, our, our challenges in curriculum, as well as also, uh, developing our students, so welcome aboard. Lauren Correll. Lauren is coming to us, um, as the speech path, and she's coming to us from Orleans Niagara Bosie. She's also got very extensive experience across two different states, Colorado and Texas. Um, and she's really worked as a liaison in Niagara Weefield now for many years, uh, working at Orleans Niagara Bosie, so she's familiar with our systems, she's familiar with our students and our programming, so we're very, uh, excited to have her on. Caitlin Jones? Caitlin Jones is gonna be helping us at the middle school and high school as a social worker this year. She's gonna be filling in, uh, for Kara Kirk. And Kara is going to, we're very excited to roll out the family support center developer position. Kara Kirk is gonna be moving into that role to, uh, facilitate and assist the growth of that program. Caitlin's gonna take her place. And, uh, Caitlin has really neat experiences in her resume. She's done a lot of specialized group work out there, both in New York City and in Missouri, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and she's a North Tonawanda graduate, so not, not too far from us, certainly, and has a, has a pretty good, um, knowledge of the, of the community overall. She's also a Columbia graduate. Um, so, we are very excited to have you aboard. You're welcome. Caitlin O'Donnell? Caitlin has been a, a long-term substitute, I believe, at Starpoint, and really just stood out. She, she beat out many people with experience that was maybe surpassing her prior experiences, and Caitlin, um, really wowed the, the panel. She's a mover and a shaker, and I think she's gonna do a great job down at, uh, Colonial Village, and, uh, I think she's bringing a good skill set for us, so welcome to you.
Thank you.
And I believe that concludes it. Thank you. Welcome to all of you.
Did you leave off on seventeen there, or number eight? Eighteen was, has to be pulled also.
I did. I apologize. Thank you for catching that. Don't wanna forget Kendall. Kendall is coming, Kendall Yoder is coming, uh, to us as a, uh, speech path as well. They're gonna be split between two buildings. And she's really looking to become part of a team, she told us in the interview process, and that clearly stood out to everybody. Um, we're certainly looking forward to incorporating you into working with the group. Um, I know that she expressed a big desire to work with the other speech paths in the district and become part of a team, become part of a school, and really, um, intensify her experience working with students especially. So, welcome to you, Ken. Thank you.
In favor of accepting Sierra, Kelly, Anthony, Kimberly, Rachel, Christiana, Kelly, Lauren, Caitlin, Caitlin, and Kendall into the Falcon family, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Um, just really quick, I, I do wanna, um, welcome all of you to, to our district, and, um, I, I wanna thank, uh, Tom Stack and our HR department. Uh, as you can see, they've been really busy. I think one of the reasons why we are getting some of the best and brightest that are out there, um, is because we were, uh, ahead of many of the other districts who would've been trying to get their, uh, hands on all of you, and we're glad that we did first. Um, you know, there were a few that were right there with us, and we were glad that we captured you instead, but, um, you know, as far as, um, the work that went in, and I, I wanna back up even, thanking the board for, you know, uh, allowing us to get that presentation out there about the federal funding very early, which gave us an opportunity to really get the hiring process going, so, um, we think it certainly gave us a, a leg up, and we know, I know a lot of my, um, uh, colleagues are, you know, in, in the process now and saying, geez, we're, where's, we're, we're having trouble finding this kind of person or this position. Um, so, we're, we're really happy that we were out in front of it, so, nice job to, to, to Tom and the entire HR department.
All right, um, moving on to standing committees. Um, I'd like to call for a vote on the first reading of policy thirty-three-ten, the public access to records, and policy fifty-six-forty, smoking tobacco and cannabis use policy. Any questions on those? All those in favor of the first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. All right, um. Ex-official student members report. You're, you're, you're on the docket.
It's summer.
Nothing to report, huh? Sorry, I, she doesn't report either, so, you know. I have to read her reports. Uh, presence report, um, few things, just, uh, one of the things we have to change is, um, her, our meeting from next week to the week after. Uh, we all thought that, majority of us thought it was supposed to be on the twenty-first and not the fourteenth, so, um, I like to make that minor change, uh, for that. Also, um, just remember, the board retreat date that we had just set is gonna be the August sixteenth, so make sure we put that in the calendar, it'll be from nine to three on that day. And that's it for the presence report at this time. I'll move over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanna officially welcome Anna. This is her first actual meeting. Thanks for coming to the last meeting, but, but welcome. And, um, if you have any questions, at a time, you can always reach out to our office, uh, Maureen, and, and at some point, I'm gonna guess somebody on the board, maybe will play the role of, of liaison with you, as, as has been the case in the past.
Julie is our traditional liaison, so, you know, when any notification, she'll send you a message about it.
We cannot report our reports together.
You can exchange your opinions. It's great. Thank you. For the board retreat, we talked about some, uh, at least one topic, and there's a, a few more that I'm, I'm gonna be looking for, so you can certainly send me that information. July twenty-second, um, we're gonna be hosting, uh, a conference here. Uh, it's a Funding Equity in New York State Conference with, uh, two other districts, um, uh, the Salmon River School District and the Lafayette School District. Um, what bonds the three of us is that we are the three school districts in New York State who all have nation schools, um, within our, within our district. And what we've found, um, you know, over the years unfortunately, is that there's been great disparity in how capital projects are funded for native schools versus how we're able to, um, go about, um, getting capital project, capital projects approved for all of our other schools. And, um, so, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, we're actually gonna be hosting, uh, that, that, that conference here. It'll be the three districts, uh, representatives from the respective nations. Um, we're inviting our, uh, representatives, our legislative representatives from the state, with really the hope of, um, getting money, um, additional funding set aside for each of the three schools, um, because, um, it's, it's a real issue, it's a real problem. So, there'll be more coming out on that, but that is something, uh, coming up on July twenty-second. We're finalizing the times for that, uh, but we're gonna host it here in our LLC. Okay? I'll, I'll send out the times and, absolutely. Next, uh, one, one thing that'll come up, I think, uh, one of our board meetings had to do with the, uh, speed limit along Saunders Settlement in front of Colonial Village. Um, the, uh, New York State Transportation Department did respond back to our letter, um, asking them to do a study, and so they're gonna do that study, it's underway. That right now is the only area. And so they're going to do that study. It's underway. That right now is the only area that has, that that area has the highest speed limit along Saunders Settlement of our three schools that are located on Saunders Settlement. So we're asking them to review that and in essence, lower that speed limit through that school zone. Okay. If you've been there, you know that there's kind of a curve that kind of precedes it if you're coming from the west, okay, to if you're going west to east and, you know, slowing down traffic around that, that curve there would certainly be helpful to all the people who are, who attend that school. I want to thank our board. We had really all of our board members except for one who was working and then later was actually participating in one of our other end of the year activities come to our graduation. And thanks for being there. It says a lot. It means a lot. It was certainly an unusual year in many respects, but your support of our students certainly has, has not wavered, and I thank you for being there. We were very, very fortunate with the weather. And we, anytime you have an outdoor graduation, you hold your breath, particularly if you're in my seat, and it worked out. The weather held up. So, but thank you. We're still waiting any updates from New York State and New York State Department of Health regarding what next school year will look like. We initially heard that there might be some guidance going on on June 30th. We had, we didn't receive anything on June 30th. Today, there was some documentation that discussed summer camps, but there was nothing that was really clear in that guidance. So we're still awaiting something. We know that obviously, clearly it's being discussed, talked about. We want to know much sooner rather than later what next year is going to look like and what any expectations might be. As we've said all along, here for a long time anyway, in our district, we're hoping for, you know, 100% students here five days a week. Because we know the struggles that students have with virtual. So that's what we're aiming for and hoping some guidance comes soon. So our next meeting now is July 21st. We'll continue to push our Erie Niagara School Superintendent's Association is pushing, as is NISCUS, as is NISBA. So all of the, you know, organizations that can push this, including many parent groups, are pushing to know what, what September will look like. Last but not least, food service. As I think most know, food, food service is, will be free until June of 2022. We are providing food in the summer through the Youth Bureau. Thank you for Niagara Youth Bureau. So anyone who's interested in taking part in that summer food service program, you can certainly reach out to the, our food service program, and they can certainly make, get you connected. That's all I have.
Any questions to superintendent on his report? All right, very good. We're moving on to the agenda then. Items for board discussion. Couple of things that we have to discuss tonight. Obviously, the chairs for the committees, the standing committees of the board going forward and members, membership on there. I also like to direct the board clerk to again advertise for community members on our policy audit and capital project committees. All right. Is there anyone who wishes to change committees from last year?
I mean, I'm on a few, so if somebody wanted to hop on the district safety, that would be okay. I don't, I'm, I'm fine staying on it, but if somebody wanted it.
Let's, let's start with this. Is everyone okay with keeping their chairmanships? Who's doing what?
Yeah, you do all my work.
Yeah, I know. All right. So we'll have Julie as chair of policy again. Audit will be chaired by who's, who's chairing audit? Was it Rick? Yeah. And then Capital Project will be Bob. I'm going to continue serving on Capital Project. Jay, you still good with policy?
Yeah.
Audit was John? No, Mike. Even policy. So we'll keep John on, on, on policy then. And were you on something else that you were in audit also or just on? Capital?
I don't mind. I was on it.
You were in audit also? All right. You want to stay on audit then also?
Yeah.
Okay. And then do you want to go on safety? But that was easy.
It's only like every quarter.
Yeah. It's not like the policy committee, you know, that just never meets and doesn't give a report.
And then I'm also on Capital Project.
Correct. Yeah, she's our third on Capital Project. All right, um, other items for board discussion, retreat items. We have the one possibility of having Rick Timms in on discussing, you know, our financial outlook. If there is another topic that you wish the superintendent and I to plan for that, please get it to be within the next week or so, so that we can begin fleshing out what exactly that's going to look like.
Can you explain what some of the normal topics would be?
I mean, so this is what I gave as an example the last time that we did this, is that if you look at the NISBA newspapers for the, you know, onboard newspapers for the past year, you look at some of the hot topic issues in education on there, those are things that really the board members should be made aware of and get some background into. Those are things that we would put on it. So I said, go back for your NISBA onboard, you know, newspapers, take a look at them and see if there's any items in there.
If you'd like, I could send you a number of things to the group. How about you do that?
Do that also. All right, other items for board discussion. I just, I got to say this though, for graduation, that was fantastic. Everyone that, when the planning and that and putting that together to pull that off out in the field, it was, it was excellent. You know, other than the hiccup of the trying to read with the microphone, coming back at you at full volume was interesting. But a- again, I, I am a full supporter of having that on our campus every year. Weather pending, of course, is going to be the issue with that, but I don't see, I, I see that as a, to see the families being able to go and walk around and take pictures and spend time there and, you know, go to different places on the campus to do that where I know that, you know, we've been kicked out rather quickly at our other venue when, once graduation ended. It was just nice to see everyone still, you know, socializing and you're having, having a enjoyable time at the end of that. So.
And if I could just add to that, you know, Mr. Pogel, Mr. White, our student leaders, I mean, they as, as the opportunities changed for what we could do for graduation, so did they, and so did their planning, right? They didn't just stick with what we, the, 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 the least of what we could do initially, right? They, as it morphed, so did they. And I just give them a lot of credit for sticking with it. It was, it wasn't easy. And it was a lot more work to do it that way, but it was certainly the right thing to do. So they did a great job.
Yeah, and, you know, I heard John wants that stage so he can like, you know, practice on and play, do some concerts for us and stuff like that, so.
I was wondering if we could have a singer.
Yeah, you know, John plays.
John plays?
Yeah.
Will he have a singer and a player?
There you go.
Would it be worth it for us to look into having our own stage that came up on graduation day from several?
We could, we could do that. We could certainly look at seeing if we could enter into some agreement longer term with the town for theirs. Yes. I, I think, I think with the first starting piece, we'll be talking to the, very early on, to the incoming class and saying, you know, what do you, what do you want to do? You know, let the, let the kids be a big, big part of that. I think it's great. I love the idea, except the weather. You know, there, there, there's a lot of different ways to do it, of course, but at some point, if the weather's not good, you end up with something that's a lot less, right, potentially? So, but, but I think it was, I thought it was great too, and I think the background.
Allison didn't say no when you said that. I'm just letting you know that right now. She's smiling. I mean, she must have a plan. Any, any old business at this time? Sure.
I met today with our bank that does our tax collection, property tax collection, and I just wanted to let the board know, I know I mentioned it last year, I think, that we will no, they will no longer be collecting in-person taxes. So this year, when we send out the tax bills, it's going to note on there that it's by mail only. So I just wanted to remind the board sort of if they're aware of that.
And I know I've heard from a few of the people who like to pay in cash that they're wondering if we're going to pay for their money orders. Yeah. It's always something. All right, any new business at this time then? Okay. Public comments? Board member comments?
No, I'd like to really thank who had put that in at graduation. It was really, really nice. I could see the difference in having it there versus having it at our, at our, I mean, everybody is more, I think it was more, you know, getting and get out. This was more, everybody was kind of in the best mood of it, which was nice to see. Hopefully that's the way we go with it. I think it is a good idea. Like you say, the weather's the biggest thing, so see where it goes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. Good save on the microphone, by the way.
The stadium only has one mic, so we, well, whatever.
Yeah, no, and what we said we would do in the future, if we, if assuming we will be outside, is we would just bring in a separate system and have that system pointing towards the, towards the stand, so it's not right back in the face of the person on stage. It's an easy fix to fix if we, if we do it like that. Yep.
Any other board member comments? Yeah. That was actually mentioned by some of the parents that night. That would be nice for concerts. So, you know, Allison's still not saying no.
One thing, let me, let me bring this up just because it's important, because it's a part of the, the, the process, right, when you make, when you make that decision. One, one of the other pieces to that is, of course, putting a stage on that field. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a tricky thing. We don't want to do anything where we ruin a, a new, new field that we put in. Most of those stages at that size, like the one that we used, is actually run by hydraulics. So, you know, there's always that concern that some of the hydraulic fluid, you know, leaks, anything like that. So those are just things that we have to take into account if we, if we go down that road. I think to, to your point, Hannah, and I think it's a good one, that if we were going to make a decision to go in the, in the, in the way of getting one, maybe we could be find, find one that would check a lot of those boxes that didn't leave us with the same level of concerns that we have like this one, you know, like maybe monster truck wheels that we roll it out on, you know, that are big wide. So we can build that. Because that would, that, that's just one of the concerns.
She's staying awfully silent. You know?
I think she likes the idea.
I, I know. I think she does. I just want to say welcome again to everyone. You know, it's a fun time. You can ask, you know, some of our people who are regulars here at our board meetings, it's, you know, come and join us. It's it's a great time every time when we're here. And we have open mic nights, so if you want to ever say anything. But no, this is a great district to work for. We have great people working here, and I, I know from, I can speak for the rest of the board that's, you know, say that we are more than excited to have all of you here in the Falcon family. You know, and I, I don't, my new vice president likes to say anything, you know, he's, we're trying to get our, some people to say stuff. Yeah, you see that? But no, in all seriousness, so enjoy your time. You know, this, this is a great place to work and the superintendent's a, you know, he's here because we, we always like to select the best and that you're, you're working for the best. And is that, is how we always see it. Another item, I know that coming with summer is going to be, you know, a lot with the construction and everything around here, please. And I know we've, there's already been some people who've complained about the, you know, you can't redo a, a parking lot without causing a mess and things like that. So again, anyone have any issues with that, please direct them to the superintendent. You know, instead of them complaining to all of us about it. Just, I, I know that there's a couple of people I've already said, hey, call the superintendent if you'd like to complain about, you know, the way our traffic flow is right now. Or backfill up of the actual flow and everything like that.
I'm glad you brought it up because we are, we're actually meeting again on Friday, and we're going to, we're going to meet every week, every two weeks because that traffic flow pattern will continue to change, right? As we pave some areas and others, I mean, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be changing and, you know, come, come the middle of August, whether, you know, whether being agreeable, it'll be done. So, you know, we should be, we, we should be done well before the start of the school year, and we're really hoping before, you know, sports start up, and that, that's, that's the goal. So if we get there, we'll be in a really good place.
All right. That being said, if there's any other board member comments at this time? All right, that call for motion to adjourn. I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Vote standing. We're adjourned.